Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. This is the April meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in Meeting Room C of the Davenport Public Library at Main. My name is Steve Eming, President of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call and introduction of attendees. Call the rolls. Malavika Shirkandi, present. Sylvia Roba.
Here.
Amanda Votto.
Here.
Thank you. Judy Lance.
Yeah.
Joe Heinrichs.
Present.
Michael Hustady.
Here.
And myself, Steve Eming, is also present. As far as we know, Laura Guinness and Tom Engelmann plan to attend, but they're not here, so we will acknowledge them when they arrive. Also in attendance today is Jeff Collins, a library director; Lexie Riling, Assistant Library Director; Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager; Tracy Moore, Development Officer; Casey Shipley, Recorder; and also Michelle Frieden; Christina Amador Porens; and Joe Crawford, who are representing the IDEA Board. And also with us is Marian McGinnis, our City Consul liaison. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so would.
Thank you, Malavika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sylvia. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, a call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Seeing no one present for public comment, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. First item there is the Friends. We don't have anyone from the Friends. Yes, Joe?
I could just share one thing.
Thank you.
The Friends did have their annual meeting last week, and they discussed their finances and they're in good place and feeling very positive. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Someone just joined us?
Good afternoon. It's Laura Guinness.
Hi, Laura. Thank you for joining us. So let the record show that Laura Guinness is in attendance. Let's see. Okay. Next item on the agenda under reports and communications is committee reports. Finance. Tom's not here. Anything you're aware of, Joe?
No. Other than electronic stuff and computer stuff that's going up a bit, but other than that, everything looks pretty much online.
Okay. Thank you. Next item under committee reports is personnel. Amanda, anything for the Personnel Committee?
I don't have anything, but it looked like from the agenda and different things we talked about, there will be some personnel issues to discuss later during the meeting.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Moving on. Next item under committee reports is advocacy. Malavika?
I just came to know today that April 16th is National Library Independence Day. Happy National Library Independence Day to you all and everybody up there, the staff. Thank you, Jeff, for coming over and presenting Davenport Public Library at Alderman Ben Jopkin's board meeting. Thank you very much. This is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time. And just last week, I saw and I shared it, just a screenshot with Jeff and Steve. QC past port, P-A-S-T-P-O-R-T, included a lovely little plaque outside that prepares for the library, and it is their online tour. You know, talks about the library and things like that. You know, they should come visit us too. So that's it. I do not have anything more.
Okay. Thank you. Next item under reports and communication is directors report. Anything to add or amplify?
Thank you, Steve. So in addition to the report that you received in your packet, just a few things to highlight. The eclipse program on April 8th was very well attended. We have about 329 people in attendance. In the month leading up to that partial eclipse, we handed out thousands of free eclipse glasses to the community, and we saved 300 of those glasses for the watch party at Eastern. Youth Services has mailing those leftover glasses to a place that's going to forward them on to schools in South America for their eclipse in the fall. So we're real excited for that, and we were able to tie in some fun social media featuring staff. You can see a couple photos from the patch for that. Our first grade glow visits, that's grade level outreach experience, those began in April and continue into May. During that time, Youth Services and our Community Outreach Services teams visit every Davenport community, school district, elementary school, where they provide library cards, in-person storytimes, and a craft. They also offer a summer reading challenge preview and a book checkout on the owl. Importantly with that, there is also a library visit incentive for each first grader that continues through the summer. So trying to get them to come into the library and form those good library habits as well, and they're entered in the grand prize drawing for a state occasion. It was pretty exciting. Last week, we celebrated National Library Week, and it was a day of giving on Friday. It was a really fun week, and staff felt really loved by the trustees and the friends. So thank you for everybody that donated to that cause. The donations were very well appreciated, as I am planning on Tuesday. In regard to community relations, just a couple of things. As you know, I'm serving on the American Red Cross Board. I also began volunteering as a troop leader with the Little Boy Scouts troop, and I provided the icebreaker session for the Davenport Youth Citizens Academy, which are their first session on April 1st. We were able to use some of the materials from the Richardson Special Collection Center to do a history match program as a icebreaker between the attendees, and it was very well received, to spotlight both of our, some of the items from our collection, as well as to give them the opportunity to just get to know each other, and for those of you that have experienced Davenport, you know how important that is. And then Malavika had mentioned that I attended the sixth board meeting. I think that went very well as well.
He's a rock star. People love him. He's already got applause.
I think it's because I brought swag. Color-changing cups, right?
Yes. Very cool. Very impressive. Very impressive. I'm your agent. Bookie one.
A reminder for the State Library's first Order and Series webinar. It's going to be this Thursday. So there, you can watch that online if you'd like. We also have a watch party at Eastern in Meeting Room A, and that's from 6:00 to 7:30 on Thursday. Next Thursday is going to be our annual in-service. That's our annual staff development day, so all three libraries will be closed for that, but the trustees are welcome to attend at it as well. If you would like to attend all or a portion of that, please just get in contact with myself or Casey. We'll make sure we can get you set up for that. I know that a couple of you have already reached out. And then the last page of the report just lists some upcoming programs that you might be interested in. And again, if you need copies of any of these marketing materials, feel free to let me know after, and I will make sure we can get those. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Moving on. Next item on the agenda under reports and communications is our Consul Liaison. Marian, do you have anything?
A few things. So the third board, we had our board meeting last night, and Clay Meara, who you guys are both rock stars, have a good reason. Anyway, we went over kind of a recap of what's happening with Canadian Pacific and the silent crossings, and looked at more drawings. It's very interesting. Every one is different based on the topography, and there's different things, like where you can put a, where you can put an island is considered good because people can't cross over, so you can do less arms and all of that. So every one is actually going to look slightly different because it, because of the topography around it. What Clay said last night is we can look for, perhaps by this fall, some work on city property, the things like maybe the islands, the islands are going to go, like at Marquette, where we have a water street. But then the other, the rest of it, we have to, we have to sign a collaborative agreement with Canadian Pacific, because they'll be doing some of the work on the actual crossings, and so we will be paying them from the grants that we've received. So, and there is permitting, the FRA, Federal Rail Agency, I think it is. Anyway, there are approvals that go through. So what Clay said last night is probably the end of 2025 is when we will see them in place. So once everything's in place, they will, then it has to have a final, there's certifications that have to be done and all of that. It's just, it's a complicated process, which it should be, because it's a pretty important one. So we, you know, this needs to, you know, be good. But it'll probably be into 2025. We also talked last night about the additional $13 million that the city, it was announced late before last, the city received as a Protect grant, which is transportation, one of the issues in terms of, in terms of flood remediation, is people being able to continue to cross through the city, because the detours is, again, you work, some of you work down here and you understand those issues. So anyway, so this Protect grant specifically will raise River Drive in a number of places that might not feel like they need raising, but, right, but do, and it's the West End at Marquette, at the Centennial Bridge, which will, they won't have to block it off to get onto the Centennial Bridge, and then over a section near Third and Fourth Street at the edge of downtown. So it will be, and this is a big grant, and they will, they wouldn't even get the contract for, you know, six months probably, but they had, this was like the fourth application, so they were successful. So this is part of the strategy, just one part of strategy, but it covers a lot of areas. So that's what that 13 million is about. And of course, all the other work that you see going on right now, River Drive, on Marquette, is to storm sewer separation, to check valves so that the water isn't, right now, the water's coming in before it's ever coming over. And so it's to, the way the cities used to build their infrastructure, so that's, yeah. So in any case, so that was good news. There is a riverfront cleanup on April 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. If anybody wants to meet down at the freight house, I think I might be able to be there that day. I've got something, a neighborhood conflict, but it's just cleanup and a good time, and it's usually hopefully a pleasant day. Let's see. We did have our bond sale last week, and it was, it was very robust, so that was great. We got, you know, we were able to get great rates, so that is all done. That's, you know, an annual thing that we do, and have to, you know, we go to market, our bond ratings were maintained, and so that helped with the bond sale, but it was a very robust sale. So that's always good. And then finally, I am part of the, along with some older folks and community people, the committee that is working on hiring the new city manager. We met in April, well, first, our RFP went out in February. We got a number of, you know, about eight people came back with an answer to the RFP. We reviewed those last week, and, I think it was last week, maybe the week before, it was last week, and then we selected the final. So that contract will be this before City Council this week, and then they will move forward the date. That projected date is early September. So it is, we've got some not-so-good applications and some great applications, and so we had a good number to choose from, you know, sort of the top, and it seemed that everybody clustered around the same ones. So, and we all did it independently. So, in any case, so, but that is moving forward.
This was your search firm?
This is a search firm. So this was to select the search firm, and now that same committee will work on, you know, during the selection. Now, there is a lot of the city manager process, there is also public input, there'll be other kinds of panels, there's other kinds of things involved, but we did select the search firm, and now that has to be a firm of the city council. So, so anyway, so it's good to move that forward. And so hopefully, I mean, the goal is to have someone here by September 1st. And that's, you know, that seems quick, but these people that we're dealing with have, you know, been able to do that in the past, so they didn't seem to have a problem with it at all. So, in any case, so that's everything I think I have right now, unless anybody has any questions for me. Maybe you have a busy schedule.
Any questions for Marian? Swing back around then. Let's make it show that Tom Engelmann has joined the meeting. Joe, or Joe, Tom. Tom, just wondering if you had any comments on the financials. Joe mentioned the item for software costs that was in the budget. Did you not get any other?
No. I mean, you know, if you look at the overall, we're three quarters of the way through here, and our overall saving appropriation is a little bit under that. So, I mean, yeah, certain items might run ahead, but overall, we're doing good.
Okay. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is old business. The first item there is to approve changes to the bylaws. I have a motion to approve the changes to the bylaws.
So would.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. A motion is second. Is there any discussion? There's a copy in your folder. Anybody want to look at it again? And thank you, Casey, for the markup better than mine. But I would say just quickly, the first one was to take away the need to have anyone who wanted to speak at public with comment, that they no longer would have to check in with Board Secretary. Also included, I guess, under Article 4, Section 1, where it talks about the executive committee, kind of make it more clear that the immediate past president will serve, but as an ex officio non-voting member. Then under Article 7, throughout that article, changing board members to trustees to be more compatible with the rest of the, the rest of the bylaws. And in Section 2, again, recognizing that during the immediate past president's tenure as a service to the board, that they would be a non-voting member. And then backing up to Article 5, changing the majority needed to make changes to the bylaws, changing that for the certain majority to a two-thirds supermajority of the entire And I believe that's it. Asking, given those, any discussion on those items? Seeing very well. House for the vote. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Hi.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Next item on the agenda under old business is a motion to approve changes to the electronic resources use policy. We discussed this at our last meeting. May I have a motion to approve the electronic resources use policy? Thank you, Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judy. Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the changes to the electronic resources use policy. Any discussion? Yes.
Just one thing to share, since our meeting last one, IDEA team did review and shared that they have no recommended changes to the policy.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none. House for the vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business. The only item there is discussion of the evaluation process of a library director. This, first of all, I guess, I apologize for sending out the information that I sent out so late, but it seemed like there was plenty of time until there wasn't. This, I guess, just wanted to, yeah, just wasn't even sure if we needed to discuss this, but the only reason I thought about bringing it up was, I had mentioned it before at a previous meeting, and I just thought that in the discussion, there may be some things that board members who are going off the board may have some comments regarding these items that may be helpful to the next board, and, but there really is, you know, nothing that has to happen now on either of the two pieces. The first one, I sent you information on about director evaluations being done during closed session. And I bring that up because, as I've mentioned before, I had participated in a webinar with the State Library, and there was a question about, you know, do you use closed sessions? I said, yes, we use them for a director evaluation, and got an email back the next day saying, that may not be appropriate use of that, and you should consider that. And so, anyway, the information that I sent you is primarily from a frequently asked questions section on the State Library website. And so as far as how we've been doing it, it was, I guess, always my thought, understanding that when it's talking about the possibility of needless and irreparable damage to someone's reputation, that, you know, I guess, we, Amanda and Laura?
Hold a second.
Oh.
Heard the word.
Why?
Yes.
Siri or whatever heard it and shut it down.
I know.
Amanda, are you still there? Laura?
I'm still here. Can you not see or hear us now?
I'm still here.
Oh.
Oh. Really? Watch or work?
Oh, I don't know. I don't. But it's made of, it's made of a rope. It's a watch.
A watch or a.
I don't watch. I don't dip wrench. There is a difference.
Okay. Let's move on then. So, anyway, so it was always, I guess, my thought that, you know, when you have a meeting and you're discussing, you know, evaluation, that, you know, you never really know what might come up, you know? So it's better, you know, and if something does come up that might cause harm to someone's reputation, then by the time that happens, it's too late. So that was good reason for a closed session. But as Mandy Easter, the State Library Law Librarian, said that there have, there apparently been some library boards that have been taking the task over this, and so don't want to cause any problems, or thought it was a good idea to mention it and see if there were any questions or anything, those that I might be able to answer anyway. And so I guess, one way to do this differently would be to have a committee, evaluation committee. In other words, as we've done in the past, we always submit our evaluations, but then there actually would be a Personnel Committee in this case, that, or I guess whoever, you know, the next building might task with that, but that they would actually develop the evaluation document for that, and would meet with Jeff and discuss those things. You know, that means that not everybody could participate in the face-to-face evaluation, but it would eliminate any possibility that we may run afoul of the open meetings law.
So let me ask you something. So is the problem, can you, you do not have the ability as a, as a group to go into an executive session, because discussion of personnel matters is one of the things in Iowa law that people can use executive sessions for.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct.
You don't?
Yeah, that's why I'm also confused, because I, I had understood that we were scrupulously following the law.
Oh, I thought, yeah.
And so now I'm like, what were we supposed to do?
Okay.
I don't, I don't, somebody else confused.
What the motion for this is, would be like, you know, I moved the board over closed session, but then reading quotes from the, from the open meetings law, "to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent devious and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that that individual has requested or requests a closed session." But, so what Ms. Easter said was that it's like the, it's like the first step would be that the, in this case, library director would have to, you know, expect that there was going to be, you know, some falling out or whatever, some bad news, I don't know, bad evaluation. At that, at that point, they would request a closed session. So it sounds to me like actually the request for a closed session is the first step. Now, she pointed out all these things that, you know, yeah, that there needs to be a request, there needs to be a recording, recording needs to be sealed, there needs to be minutes, and there needs to be minutes, and I have always taken notes and prepared minutes and sealed them in the envelope with the recording, and Jennifer puts a sticker across the envelope opening, and I sign across the seal. And so all those things have been taken care of, but it's, it's just that apparently that's not necessarily.
Well, but maybe the people they were talking about weren't taking all those steps.
Well, that couldn't be. Oh, no. Maybe here?
I mean, I mean, maybe like, maybe that the general practice is to meet in closed session to evaluate, which makes sense, because it's a personnel matter. It's a personnel, it's evaluation, but maybe, maybe libraries aren't taking all the steps that this library is taking.
Yeah, I don't know that.
I, I don't know. Steve, I.
You know, I mean, I, I talked, spoke with her about how we've done things, and she still thinks we may be, so maybe it's just something that takes some more.
We've been so old, and then we forgot to send the people out.
Oh, I know. We've done that, and then we forgot to.
Oh, Joe.
Wouldn't find it.
Hey, everyone, I'm having a hard time knowing if you're hearing me.
Laura, I can hear you.
Yes, there is the.
I don't know if the rest of the room can.
I don't think they can hear us.
Kind of obnoxious, because I feel like this was the part that you and I need to chime in on.
I feel like it too. Maybe we can chat. Let me see.
Frank discussion, whether it be suggestions to improve or whatever, that, but would not necessarily cross over into the point of making a decision.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So I. So, I personally think that, I mean, at this point, I, in my opinion, fob this off on legal department, call, ask them and say, are we doing the right thing? If they say we are, I say, forget the State Law Library.
I don't get everything in the news, don't, but I thought the city was actually being sued over an open meeting law violation, right? Is that not happening?
Well, yes, it may not be valid, but, yeah, anybody can sue anybody, to answer your question, so, so that, that's neither here nor there, really.
I would want more clarification from them on this before we make any changes. I think what we're doing is very upfront.
But what's the risk? You say, she says we might be at risk, and I'm still not understanding.
Okay, under, under the open meetings law, I don't have it here in front of me, but, but under the open meetings law, that individual, you know, board members could, you know, could be fined.
They, they didn't do that. Legislature didn't do that.
For violating the open meetings law. And let me also say then that the, the only way to, to avoid, you know, liability in situation is in, over a closed session, is to vote against going into a closed session. So in other words, if, if you don't feel it's a proper use of a closed session, that if you vote against it, and somehow in the end, that was found to be a violation, and people were fined, you could vote against.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going, you know, each one of the entities that the public libraries in the state of Iowa make some kind of same, or is it up to the state or the public? Oh. You have to kind of wonder about where all this is coming from too, and what is generating this storm around something that has been, you know, procedure and accepted and all that.
Yeah, I, I don't think, if I'm understanding where you're coming from, I don't think that that this coming from the State Library has anything to do with anything else that's going on.
Oh, I think it does.
No, I don't, no, I don't think so, because, because it just came out of a comment, and, you know.
Right. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm talking about is the, the whole storm around how libraries are run, and who, that's, I think it comes, this discussion may come out of that, the whole thing that is, seems to be circulating around libraries and what their role is and the fights, you know, for library boards and, you know, all this stuff, I think, I don't even think this would be a question if all of that, I'm not talking about local, I'm talking about that whole environment right now. I, I can't even imagine why anyone would, you know, ask this question otherwise, because, I mean, personnel matters, evaluations are, I mean, you know, you evaluate somebody in a public meeting, you can get your, there's a lot of laws around personnel discussions. Now, maybe what you're talking about is having a subcommittee that isn't a quorum do that work, and that may be a way to avoid the question of the open meeting.
We actually used to do it that way. When I first came on the board and I was chair, that is what was handed down to me as the process, yes.
Yeah, so maybe that's.
It was done by the personnel committee with input from the board, they wrote the report, they maybe presented it to the director, and then, you know, the rest of the board got the report on.
Why did that change though?
Uh, I don't know, not on my watch, I don't know, I don't remember. Oh, someone wanted it, someone just said, oh, I don't think we should have it, it was something like that. Like, oh, wait, why are we doing it that way? Why shouldn't the whole board be involved in that? Okay, I mean, that's really how it happened. So I don't know, who am I? I mean, I don't, I don't really have a thought one way or the other about it. My reference, I would say, is to have the whole board involved, I think it's a better process, but, you know, I don't, I don't remember who or why or what, but the board said, oh, yeah, do you remember, Steve?
No, I don't, I don't remember that.
I don't even.
But.
Well, I remember, because I was carrying.
You're right. When it shifted, it was, I think something like that, people just, let's have everybody be involved.
It was like, why are they doing it? Well, because they took it on as, you know, I don't know, but then we changed it, so.
Okay.
And I have no idea about this one, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know whether this is appropriate, but it begs me to think, to ask a question to nag us, but like, you know, when I do the trustee outreach, the outside, is it something to ask them how do they do it? Or is it something, you know, I mean, or not in a meeting, but it could be a one-on-one, that some of us know some trustees from other libraries within the state of Iowa, you know, just as a casual.
It cannot be wildly different, it just, it just can't be, like, unless they're really violating.
Yes, Jeff?
Just one thing to follow up on some of the comments. I'm happy to reach out to the city attorney and get some legal advice from them on best course of action, and I also can get in contact with IUBLA, the Iowa Urban Public Library Association, and other directors to see how they're doing it within their libraries as well, that would be helpful for the board.
And this came from whom? Just curious.
This is from the law librarian of the State Library of Iowa, who's not, not an attorney, but she, but she, she follows all this stuff.
Sure.
And has, you know, lots of cases that, keeps track of things where they come up with that, so. But anyway, yeah, it's, but, you know, the, the, you know, having a, you know, committee, you know, is a way to, you know, avoid it, any problem with the open meetings law, but, you know, again, it doesn't give everybody an opportunity to, you know, participate in any discussion. I, I will say that the only similar thing I could think of is, when we were, when Amy was going to retire, we were going to be looking for a new library director, I looked at different library boards to see how they conducted that process, and the only one I remember seeing for sure that I could put a name with was, at that time, Bettendorf was looking for a director, and they actually just before that, and they actually had a search committee, which was just, was a less than forum who was going to handle that whole thing, and, you know, and kind of like what Sylvia was talking about, and I don't know, going back, maybe it was me, but I thought, I suggest we, I suggest that we do it as a committee though, so everybody could participate.
Well, it's, it's possibly in the minutes somewhere, because that would be something we would have had to do.
That's good.
I mean, in a way, it doesn't matter, because it was, it seemed to me to be the will of the board, and the board had a different kind of history and functioning prior to your being the, our leader. Yeah, it was just different, it was a, you know, a different kind of, and so I think people were like, yeah, we want to participate in that, you know, and it seems like it's worked okay.
And, and I was on the school board for several years, and I recall actually that we used to use a closed session to heed that there. Also want to mention too that one of the requirements is that you actually take a vote to approve the evaluation, and any, you know, vote, and we all know, those have to be in a closed session, and we've always done that in open session. Yeah, anyway, hopefully.
And also what's irreparable, irreparable harm, like, that's like so subjective, so then would that have to be litigated? I mean, it's just like, hmm, it doesn't work.
Well, I think, I think, you know, some, you know, additional information would be helpful going forward, and, you know, it's not anything that, I think there's a rush on about interest even on the outcome, but really it's, you know, in November is whenever, like, you know, some consideration would be given to the process. Anyway, that's, that's that. Any other questions or comments?
Steve, you had also mentioned something else, any information you shared previously on when the evaluation is done, because you wanted to discuss that.
Yes, that was a nice, so the, the timing of the evaluation, this just occurred to me once or so ago, that three of us that are going off the board, looking forward to next evaluation would be like in November, and so there are members of the board right now who, you know, have five, five months of experience that don't have an opportunity to share that in the evaluation of Jeff. And on the other hand, looking at it the other way too, there's going to be three new board members that come November or whenever, will participate in that evaluation with three or four months of experience, and so, you know, maybe it would work better to have the evaluation in June, okay, or, you know, that's, because again, this is something for the future, but I don't know if anybody have any comments on that, kind of throw them a pot, for the, maybe for the next board.
It would seem that, because we tend to operate on a kind of consensus basis, that would not it be helpful to just then sort of throw open the evaluation process, at least, and sort of the comment part at the beginning, to the departed board members, get their input along with the new board members, just, that, kind of, that's what we've been doing in the past, we've been kind of compiling all those comments into a sort of one large sort of spreadsheet, and so instead of just having nine members, we might have 12, but I mean, what's the big deal? From my perspective.
You have to.
No, I.
Pardon?
Do we leave the word?
I mean, if you want to, you know.
So it'd be like an amicus brief.
Correct, perfectly amicus. You know, I, I'm wondering, and I'm just, I don't have to know opinion about this, maybe it was in November, because the budget is being done then, so, you know, when you're setting your budgets, and I don't know if it makes, it might not make any difference in the big, it might make any difference in the scheme of things, but you were, budget preparation is going on in November, and that may be for the upcoming July, I mean, that's when it starts to get locked in, so maybe that's the, and maybe it's not a good reason, maybe that's the genesis of why it, I just remember.
It was more probably, it was just the end of the year. It was November. No, and I could be wrong about this, I believe we had, when I came, LaWanda was the director, and I believe that had been her many, many, many years before her hiring. That's, that's a good thing, good thing. I don't think there was any other reason to have, but, but why do we haven't changed that item? Amanda and Laura said they were trying to make comments, but nobody could hear them.
Oh, oh.
And she had that, that question Amanda put up.
Can you guys hear us now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello.
Oh, here. Oh, you can see and hear us, okay. For some reason, during the closed meetings, you guys couldn't hear us. I was just wondering about the, yeah, when were we looking at if we did do a change, and the timing of like a May-June one, when would we be looking to implement that?
Oh, that's.
Like, would we have a November one, or, and then next year do a June one also?
So I mean, to throw my two cents in, it's always a best practice to change that period at the start of an evaluation period, instead of moving the goalposts in the middle.
Yeah.
So, that would be the best practice to do it.
Did you hear, I'm sorry, did you hear Jennifer's comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're, we're talking June of 25.
Yeah, I could hear it, and I, I agree, it becomes a moot point, given the rolling off of the terms for this calendar year, because we're not going to change it this calendar year, but I think aligning it, thinking about when it best fits the cycle of work for our board and for the director, whether or not that ties to the budget process, I think is important. And also, we were trying to chime in when we were talking about the closed meeting, and I guess you couldn't hear us, but if I could take a moment, I did want to share a comment.
Sure, please.
Um, I, Steve, I really appreciated the email that you sent out, and I feel really strongly that according to that email and according to that research, we are not in compliance, and I'm not comfortable with that risk, and so I appreciate Jeff's suggestion, or Jeff taking on the responsibility to go to City Legal, and let's get some clarity on this, because I do not want our board to have any exposure for not being completely compliant with Open Meetings Act.
Sure, okay, thank you.
My, my only question on that part of the discussion was, I mean, the way we've been doing the closed meetings, I know there's a question of, it sounds like whether we should be doing it as a closed meeting unless there's some idea of irreparable harm that's going to happen, but the way we've been doing it, other than perhaps, I don't know if we've been getting the library administrators' request in writing, but other than that, have we been in full compliance with everything else that was said? I mean, it sounded like we have then.
Yes, yeah, um, yeah, I, it was pointed out, as was pointed out in the information I sent you by the State Law Librarian, that, you know, we needed, there needed to be requests from the director, minutes of the meeting, what else?
Recording.
Yeah, recording, recorded, the, the closed session can't be recorded, and all those things, and, you know, I told her that we've been doing all those, and that the vote on the evaluation was taken in open session, which we've been doing too. So I, I think, you know, everything there, you know, we've been in compliance with, and I also mentioned in there that all of that, the recording, the minutes, the letter from the director requesting a closed session, all those things going to an envelope, a seal is put across the sealed envelope, and I sign across the seal, and then it's locked up, so I think, you know, in everything, we're, you know, in compliance with, and the only question is, you know, I guess the only question is a question that was raised by the law librarian.
Laura, what is your concern about the exposure?
I guess, I don't know, yes, I can hear. I don't know what it, I don't know what it could be, but if the interpretation of the law is that the director has to request a closed meeting, and we've just been doing a closed meeting by default, that to me seems pretty clear.
No, we, we absolutely have not. We've always had a letter from the director.
Yeah, there's always been a letter.
Always.
Yeah, there's always been a letter, and that, that goes in the envelope with the recording and the minutes.
I think.
And your nail clippings.
I think some of the.
Right, but aren't, aren't, I'm sorry, perhaps I'm misunderstanding the process, but we've always moved to closed session by default, the director's never requested it.
No, 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 it's always been requested.
Ahead of the meeting, he requested ahead of the meeting. I think it's an written request.
An written request.
Ahead of the meeting.
So, no, we're okay with that.
If I could, if I could jump in, I think one of the reasons for the State Library being wigged out about this is the legislature changed the law and created penalties that we could, we personally could suffer if we violate the open meetings law. There's now monetary penalty, I don't remember exactly, but I believe that's what they did. So that would be something we would need to clarify from City Legal, exactly what those penalties are, and then that would at least let everybody know what is going on.
And, and who's going to find us? I mean, who's going to levy that? Who? Who in this state, who is at first? I mean, it's just kind of like, really? Okay, they've got a lot of time to sue us for, I don't know, it seems really, and I don't know her, Ms. Easter, but perhaps she has a lot of time on her hands, I don't know.
No, she's a certified.
I know, no, I know she is, no, I know she's a real certified, qualified person, but I don't know, maybe it'll just. Maybe it'll just. But maybe I could say that. I won't be here to be sued.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah, we won't be here to be sued.
Okay, no, I, I think this has been good discussion. So Jeff will turn with the group. Jeff will see what they know and can offer as far as their experience.
Thank you.
But, but there is a good idea that we move the evaluation process maybe to like June.
That's, that's.
Because then it would coincide with board members.
So does that need to be brought up as an issue for next month to be voted on?
Yes. I'm not sure about.
I would, well. I would say this, I would say this. I would say that I would do that, you know, no sooner than July and not even then. Sometime before November, when the next evaluation would be. We would not have an earlier evaluation.
Exactly. It would be 25 would be the first.
But.
June.
So you would change November. Set that goal time period to June, July, whatever date you pick so that they, so it's known that that, that first period is going to be shorter. And then it'll be a longer period the next time around. And then it'll coincide then to a year after that.
So the confusion is, I think, maybe that we're not doing this now.
That's correct. We're not doing this now.
It is a thought.
And one other thing that I have to keep in mind is that as far as the changing it is that I believe part of our accreditation is that we have an annual evaluation. So it would have to be a short period rather than like a six month period rather than an 18 month.
So, but you were saying do the one in November and then start a new one in June, correct?
So it is still, it's what, meet that year period.
Right.
Okay, timeframes will just look different.
We could do.
So long as everybody knew beforehand, before we did the November one, that the next one is June.
Well, honestly, Jeff had his first evaluation after being here two months or something.
That's right.
We'll re-implement that cycle.
I know, but that's part of our process.
Right.
For him to be about.
Well, I mean, the whole, the whole, the whole reason for bringing this up is to try to be sure we're doing it right and get ideas and what and why to. So we'll just look forward to more information and, you know, using that to go forward. Okay. Next item is President's Comments. Guess I really don't have any. I used to only think it would be is if anybody has contributions for donuts, be around after the meeting to take care of those. And now I'll turn it over to, to Michelle, Christina and Joe for the presentation on the IDEA team.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for having us and thank you for the donuts. That was very sure to us. My name's Michelle Frieden. I am a Community Outreach Library Assistant with the library. Myself and Joe and Christina are going to give you an overview of our IDEA team, of which we are members. And at the end, when we're done, if you all have any questions, please ask away. We wanted, we love to talk about it, so we want to make sure you have all the information.
True, thank you.
Originally, the IDEA team was founded in April 2021 as a DEI team, the DEI committee, had a little bit of a different look than it does now. We have since evolved and to try to meet changing needs. And with that, we have changed our name to reflect more inclusive goals. So instead of simply DEI, we are IDEA, which is inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility. So we wanted to include all of that in our name because that's what we're striving to do, not only for our patrons, but for our coworkers. Our mission, the inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility, the IDEA team. Our mission, we are a cross-departmental team dedicated to making our libraries a more inclusive, diverse, equitable and accessible place for patrons and staff alike in support of the library's mission to connect the diverse community to resources that inform, enrich, educate and entertain. This team strives to ensure that the library provides access to information and resources to all of our community members by maintaining inclusive, safe and welcoming spaces. Joe, you want to talk about?
Sure, so I'll talk a little bit about staffing. Currently, we have from the staff, five team members. And we have one member who is from your Board of Trustees. So currently, we have members from the staff that are from Outreach, Facilities, New Services, Customer Service and Special Collections. We do get a helping hand from someone in Info Services because as of right now, we don't have a librarian. They step in to do our live guides. So they are full time on the team, but they do help out. And that's Claire Trimble. The other members of the team, other than the ones you've already met today are Mitreese Brown and Wesley Burton. So some of the tasks that we are tasked with, we are supposed to facilitate ongoing training and support for all library staff in developing cultural competencies. We review policies, procedures and current practices, and we try to do that through a lens of equity. And finally, we suggest resource, resources, sorry. Let me tell you something, when you get braces as an adult, it really makes some words trickier than they used to be. So S's tend to be one of those, especially like when I'm doing Storytime, I go S's, S's and they get all tied up. So, all right. We suggest resources, services and programs that are reflective of the community we serve. And we also, if we're going to implement those, we make sure that they have any barriers from implementing them. We make sure those get removed. So, and then Christina's going to talk about some of the things we've been working on and have done.
So we do monthly trainings on different IDEA topics. And we send them an email to all the staff with links to different formats because everybody learns a different way. So some of them are articles that they can read. There's videos for people like to watch. There's people who prefer to listen to a podcast. So we have all the different varieties so that they can do them on their work time or they can do it on their own too. And some of the things we've talked about recently have been Black Americans in Libraries Today. And we sent a really neat timeline, an interactive website that has a timeline. That was, that was pretty cool.
This is an example of that email.
Yeah.
This is an example of the type of emails that we would send out to the staff. This is the one from this, Black Americans in Libraries. You can see we list out the trainings for everyone to select what they want to review. This is just an example of. It worked.
That's okay. It's basically a sliding timeline where they can.
Yeah, because you can scroll down and there's a timeline in the middle that is sort of interactive.
There, scroll down.
Nope.
Well, if you could see it, it's, it has years, each year you can travel along and see what happens in that year.
Yeah. Exactly, that's interesting.
Yeah, and then we've also talked about, about neutrality, intentional inclusion is the most recent one that we did. And next month, we're going to talk about Asian, Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage. We have a live guide where we compile all these links that we have sent and all the monthly trainings so that staff can review them at a later time. And I don't know if we're going to be able to share that, but it's.
It must be stormy out, right? That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
But it's one of our live guides. It is not listed on the website for the public to see, but if you have the link, the staff have the link and you can view it there. And it has links to books in our catalog that relate to the topic as well as all the videos and articles that we share with people. And then, as you can see, we, today, we had the Internet and Computer Use Policy Review. So Jeff sent it to us before you guys got to discuss it and made some suggestions. And we did, we did the volunteer policy too. But Malavika, you've been in this team a long time, I'm a new member, so.
I came in on the first meeting, 2021. And I must say, this group is just fantastic. They're robust in the way they make choices of the topic. And I have shared, I've shared your live guide because, with all of us here, because that, as you correctly shared with us, that there's no link on the website and that gives a detailed list. The other thing that I like is there is discussion of what's coming up. You know, you are, this is the fact that how long should those articles, podcasts be? You know, people need to have that time to sit and see. Also, like, I don't get tired of listening to a half an hour TikTok or whatever, you know. But, you know, you're thinking of all those processes. I have watched everything that you have shared so far and a few things have really come in handy. So I sincerely appreciate and thank you for that. And it's really been a pleasure to be a part of this team. We meet in the evenings, a day before, Tuesdays used to meet before, I think.
Yeah, it'd be four to five.
Four, four to five in the evenings, right here in this room. And we've changed a few things now as we develop the community. So thank you for what you all do because these are immensely important topics.
Thank you for being a part of it. We appreciate your guidance as well, anyone who participates in our team. I think everyone participates equally. I think it's a pretty great team to be a part of. And feel like you have a voice and also learn something from each other also. It's a, it's a really great team to be a part of. Does anyone have any questions for us about what we do on the IDEA team?
I was wondering, and it has to do with, one of my kids, my daughter's, has worked for a number of companies that have DEI programs. And she has done a lot of compare contrast. She happens to work for a company now that she thinks is really dedicated to the changes that need to take place in the workplace. And she believes the company believes it and, you know, and other companies, it's like, she just over there, you know, and there was no follow up. And so my question really is about that piece of you are really, you know, you're in it, you're in it. You know what I mean? Like, you guys are, you know, really thoughtful. But how is this impacting the staff? You know, like, how do they take, because there's going to be the naysayers for sure, especially with the stuff that's been in the media about DEI, you know. But, and, and kind of part of that is what changes do you see? Like, it's one thing to read an article, but then it's another thing to have a relationship in real time with your colleague. Like, so what kind of stuff are you seeing, measuring, thinking about?
It's a great question and a great point. Oh, actually, Jeff, you want?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, a great question and a great point, and I'll let you each, I think we all have our own take on this. But what I want to say is, I'm glad you brought that up because you're right for two separate things. Number one, it is, it does make a difference to be a part of an IDEA slash DEI team in an organization where you do feel supported from your administrative staff. And, and I believe that we are. Now, we also have to be careful about what we are able to do within the, within the bounds of the law. We cannot require these trainings, but we can offer them in a way that not only provides people information they may not seek out on their own, but reminds others on staff that we are on your team. We are providing this information that maybe someone's at home struggling with a child with mental illness or a person with a physical disability. They're working on these things in their home life. Then they get an email from their all-staff team that reminds them, hey, we want everyone to have this information. And if you'll look at the email that passed around, it's not just one thing. It's a lengthy list that we send out. They don't have to review it all. They can pick one. But if you're the person in the minority, sitting there, going to work, working the desk, working, and, you know, working in facilities, wherever you are, I think it helps to feel supported by your coworkers who may not even know you're dealing with this, but they want everyone to have the opportunity to learn about it. I don't know if anyone else has a different take than that, but.
And it's ultimately, the onus is on the person. And once they get the email, we can only do so much, unfortunately, in that regard. So we just want to be there to be supportive and to take ideas. We do reach out and say, if you have something you'd like for us to research, maybe you don't have the time to research everything that you're interested in about something maybe a friend or a family member is going through or something you're going through, that's something we do so that we can provide information to their coworkers as well as them.
And all the information we share is vetted by, one team member will suggest it and somebody else will review it to make sure that it's appropriate. So it's, I think it's great to see something that, maybe I, like you said, I'm dealing with or my kids are dealing with and like, nobody really talks about. And it's good to know that, hey, this is something that our patrons might be experiencing, but also your coworkers might be.
Right, right, your employees for sure.
Yeah.
And then you've got something handy you can talk to. If a patron comes to you at the desk, you're answering all sorts of questions. And if they ask you something, you've got a handy little, little snippet you can share. If you're just conversationally, oh, this is something I recently learned, maybe it's worth, you know, that sort of thing. But as far to your question about impact, that's a tougher one.
Sure.
And subjective, of course.
Yes.
But I.
But I would add on to that. And it's more than, you know, the DEI team, now the IDEA team, has really done a lot and really been instrumental in terms of moving our strategic plan forward. There's some very specific goals and objectives that they have done to help move us forward as an organization. In some cases with our hiring processes and how we hire, they provide some really good feedback on that to improve some of the testing or non-testing that we might do.
That's, that's really great stuff. I mean, that works with that. That was, that was. That makes real differences.
For sure. And then reviewing the opportunity to review policy, that usually goes through administration and leadership team always. And then now IDEA team has an opportunity to look at it too through their lens and to see how things impact patrons as well. And then, of course, the trainings, they create a huge database that we have that we can refer back to. And it's helpful for programmers when they're looking at developing some of their programs. It's helpful for some of our selectors as they develop displays that they might want to look at. But all that information is there in that database.
It's just really, really hugely raising awareness. I mean, that, at the very, at the very least, you're doing that and making it okay. I noticed at one time I saw you and you had a button that said, ask me about my pronoun. Are you the one?
Yes.
And I said, I'll ask you, tell me about your pronouns.
Great, I'm so glad you did. And I don't wear it anymore, but I should get back to it because the reason, my pronouns are she/her.
Yeah, I know.
The reason, the reason I wear that button is just so that we start the conversation because I don't think it should, the onus should fall on people who use they/them pronouns to be out there educating everyone.
I liked it, I really, I liked it a lot because we, then you.
I had kind of an interesting conversation about that too. And Jeff mentioned about hiring. I remember all of us, including me, took that test that we have here that we give to the incumbent applicant. And I've done library science, but I couldn't answer a few things. I mean, you know, what I mean is, the way I took it is, you know, my, my way of thinking is different because I'm not studied here. So my language is different. So, you know, we could share those things, you know, how do I think as an outsider and, you know, all that. So we went through that test. Each one of us took it, you know, the stab of it. And that was a good experience to make those, you know, so thank you for helping those changes.
The power of the barrier.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
If I could make an observation, I think, to me, one of the important things that you guys are doing is having input into our policies. Because that is the one thing that we do is set policy. And so I'm just glad that you guys are looking at that before it actually makes it to this point so that we're aware of if there are issues that maybe should have been addressed. They're, they're included in that. I personally think that is, because again, that's the one thing that we do do here is set policy.
It's refreshing to, you know, I sit on the FIGI board and it is refreshing to hear that both of those organizations are, it's not just lip service. And I've, and I've been on the FIGI board long enough to see it start from an IDEA to now. And we actually have a report, you know, that's part of our reporting. But, but the FIGI only meets once a quarter. So, I mean, we're a quarterly meeting, but it's really refreshing that.
Two of my favorite places.
Just, just wanted to comment that to let you know that Malavika reports on what's going on with your team from her attendance at the meetings. And also has forwarded us the, at least I saw it somewhere.
The live guide. The live guide.
Yeah, the live guide, thank you. There also used to be. There also used to be the State Library had a DEI team that used to send out a monthly.
The Iowa Library Association.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's right. Do they still do that?
I don't think they've.
Okay, because I don't get them anymore, I don't know if I just call off.
They got a new method for their website, and they changed the way their emails work. No, I haven't been getting any more, but I think they put all the past training into our website, just like they did.
Yeah, because that used to be magazine articles and all kinds of stuff. Well, thank you very much.
One, one other thing, I just wanted to make sure that I share too, and acknowledge is that all parts of the team are available for all members of staff. So in some cases, there will be supervisors, in some cases, non-supervisors. And members of the team join, and they might quit and do something else, and then they might join again. And it's really a free-flowing opportunity for that cross-departmental collaboration. And so, like, for example, Lexi was really integral at the beginning stages of getting the DEI team moving, started, and moving forward, and then stepped off last year, and it still continues moving forward without her guidance. And it's just really great to have that opportunity to hear Lexi's.
You're a great group.
Thanks for sharing, this was really informative. You were just remembering what the IDEA acronym stood for, like, we had moved from DEA to IDEA.
Thank you, Tom, second?
Second.
I was going to die for the last one, second, thank you so much.
Next item?
All in favor?
I don't like to be a second.
Hi, vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You need some hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your time.